Adoption of the agenda, having a panel, and motions for approval. That's our case for today. They have a motion, so.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, being that, I vote for motion approved. All raise your right hand in favor. My pleasure, carry your hands. You did say.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on there. Next item in the meeting is public comment. It's part of the business. Okay, we'll move on to item number two. And I recognize John Pilkington, our Director of Planning and Development for Public Hearing for rezoning case eighteen dash two Bethlehem Fire Department. And I guess we need to open a public hearing. An entertainment.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to motion that we go into a public hearing. The discussion of rezoning case eighteen dash three Bethlehem Volunteer.
House Speaker. They have a motion, they say. All in favor of it? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board.
Tonight you have rezoning case eighteen dash three. And it says that, but I don't know if there may be, it may be marked differently on your agenda items, so I apologize if it is. For rezoning for Bethlehem Volunteer Fire Department. This is the old fire department building located at 235 Teetown Road. The owners are requesting that it be rezoned from its current RA twenty to NB, which is neighborhood business. The intent is to, and I'll ask Mr. Storms, are y'all selling the property?
Yeah, they're selling the property.
Okay. They'll be selling it to a gentleman to store his equipment for a pressure washing business that he operates. As noted in the discussion, the rezoning would be consistent with the 2008 Alexander County Comprehensive Plan, which identified the area as designated for commercial use. And rezoning the parcel would be consistent with the adopted goals and policies of the plan. As noted, the site is approximately a half an acre. And I do apologize for finding the picture of the property up here. I didn't realize we would have AV equipment since we're meeting here, so I did not give it to Chad. So I do apologize for that. I think you all have the apps in your package. And this recommendation was taken to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their August meeting on August third. And at that meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request based on the fact that the rezoning request is consistent with the future land use map in the 2008 Comprehensive Plan, and also consistent with the goals and policies adopted in the plan, and that the request will not negatively impact the surrounding in regards to residential development. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to try and answer them. With this property, as long as it's been there, it was obviously there prior to county zoning being adopted. There's really not any other use that's suitable for it, other than a fire department or some type of use like this where it's very low intensity, really no traffic. Everything that'll be done will be contained within the building. And when they approached about rezoning the property, I thought the best zoning district would be neighborhood business, simply because it's the least intensive use for commercial zoning, and would also allow the type of operation that the future owner wants to use the property for.
Any questions? I think that's where Bojangles, the truck, and the home area on.
Yes. And I actually will have requests coming to you guys in November for some more changes from residential to commercial along 127. So there's a handful of least people wanting to rezon property from residential to commercial along the corridor there.
Okay, there's no questions. Any kind of motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to close.
Motion, they say.
Say.
All in favor of it? Right hand. Public hearing is closed. I don't need to play with all of this stuff. I guess as a motion that we approve, public hearing, rezoning case eighteen dash three Bethlehem Volunteer Fire Department, per the request and the approval of the zoning and planning committee that's already had, they say. Okay. Rezoning case eighteen three, the applicant being Bethlehem Fire Department, property owner is staying. Current zoning district is RA twenty residential. Proposed zoning district will be down to neighborhood business. And current land use is vacant over fire department. And proposed use is small business. And staff. Okay. And the recommendation is approval effective with the rezoning request being consistent with the future land use map in the 2008 Comprehensive Plan, and is also consistent with the goals and policies adopted in the plan. Request will not negatively impact the surroundings with regards to commercial development. And I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
I just want to say, I love when tax exempt property re-enters the non-tax exempt world. So is any fire departments, churches, whomever, you guys make, you know, you guys make land or whatnot, sell that stuff, let somebody store some pressure washing equipment in it. That's counted.
Okay, all in favor, back to the rest of your right hand. Right hand, hands. Thank you, Mr. Phil.
Thank you.
Okay, and moving on to item number three, stage groundbreaking mural, written in public information for the item, Courthouse Park. I recognize Gary Herron, item number six.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Thanks for letting me be here tonight. Just take a few minutes of your time, but we wanted to let you guys know and inform the public of a special event we've planned for Friday, September 28th, from five to nine o'clock. We're going to hold a groundbreaking ceremony for the new rotary stage at the Alexander County Courthouse Park. And we're also going to do a dedication ceremony for the new mural that's downtown on the Hefner Office Complex building. Real big asset to the town and to the county, and things are starting to move and look good down there. So we'd like to thank Robert Campbell for doing that mural for the county. The new Courthouse Park will be an excellent venue for concerts, performances, and even more once the Rotary Club completes the new stage. I hope that, I think that's sometime maybe early to mid next year is what I've heard, so we're looking forward to that. And we are very appreciative of the Rotary Club's investment in our community, of course. Stage will be an ideal location for a lot of county events, as well as events by other organizations. And I'm sure many people have noticed the beautiful new mural downtown, the one that Mr. Campbell funded, depicts various landmarks across the county, whether it be Rocky Face or Lenny's Mill, or the A&amp;M Feed Store, where he's going to be doing a new restaurant in coming months. Anyway, so we're going to dedicate that mural that same evening, and we're going to also have live music with Sarah Tucker. We're going to have food trucks, children's activities, and more. So it's going to be a fun evening at the new Alexander County Courthouse Park. And we thought combining the two events would, they would complement each other and bring more folks out for the event that evening. So again, the date for the stage groundbreaking and mural dedication is September 28th from five to nine. And the park is located at 131 West Main Avenue downtown Taylorsville, near the courthouse. So everyone come out, bring a lawn chair or a blanket, and have a good time.
Thank you, Gary. Good news. I've been looking forward to hearing about that stage being started for a while. I do appreciate it, you said, the Rotary, you helped me on that stuff.
That's really nice today. I was walking along yesterday, but I did take a foot there for that purpose. But I did check out the murals, and it's kind of got a three deep thing on one. I refer to as old tub of gas and old building.
Right.
And it's with the ticket booth there, it's really deep, and you're looking at it from that one side, it's, it's a jump in its talons.
Ben Zachary's funded a lot of that, and of course Todd Bonahue was the one who did the murals, and hopefully we'll be hitting some more as months and years progress. He's a great artist. Yes, sir.
Gary, I've been to a few events in Wilkes at the stage they have downtown. This will be very similar, and really nice events that we'll be able to do. I'm looking forward to many, many years of a lot of family entertainment there in that area.
It's going to be great.
Thank you, President. You're welcome. Thank you. And moving on to our next item, number four, I would recognize action for private county development, election, day of early voting in Bethlehem One Precinct, the election day, holding place, check.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I just have a few updates regarding the upcoming general election. Chad, if we go to the next slide. First of all, I'd like to just kind of give a timeframe of where we're at as of tonight with the general election. We are thirty-two days until the voter registration deadline on Friday, October the 12th. Thirty-two days until we start early voting on Wednesday, October the 17th. Fifty-four days until early voting ends on Saturday, November the 3rd. And fifty-seven days until election day on Tuesday, November the 6th. Next slide. This summer, we've had some statutory changes regarding early voting via session law 2018-112, which was passed by the General Assembly on June 27th, and session law 2018-129, which was passed on June 29th. These two session laws make the following changes to early voting. So there's now a new early voting period. That period begins the third Wednesday before election day and ends the Saturday before election day. Essentially, it added an additional day to the existing one-stop voting period. It was a seventeen-day period, it's now an eighteen-day period. Weekday uniform hours, so on each weekday, all additional one-stop sites in the county must be open 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. County boards no longer have discretion on setting operating hours on weekdays. Another requirement is if any site is open, then all sites must be open. So any day one-stop site is open, weekday, weekend, all sites in the county have to be open that day. That again eliminated the county board's discretion on running a slimmer schedule with satellite sites. They essentially, if it's, you call it a one-stop site, it's got to run the entire length of the one-stop voting period. This slide here is a comparison. It shows the one-stop plan that was implemented for the 2016 general election, and then we have the one-stop plan that was unanimously approved by our board for this general election to comply with the new statutory requirements. First off, I'll try to set some context and go over the plan that was implemented in 2016. We had three one-stop voting sites for that election. The Board of Elections Office operated for twelve weekdays. Those hours on weekdays were 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. And then two Saturdays, the site was open 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. The Board of Elections Office provided 118 hours of one-stop voting. We had two satellite sites, the Bethlehem Community Fire and Rescue Department and the former Energy United Building in Stony Point. Those sites operated the last six days of the one-stop voting period. They were open for five weekdays, 10:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., and then the last Saturday, 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. They operated for forty-five hours each. That brought a cumulative total of 208 hours of one-stop voting under that plan. Move forward to 2018 to comply with these new statutory requirements and keep all three sites open. All three locations have to operate for thirteen weekdays. Their weekday hours are 7:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. And then they're open that final Saturday, which is required by statute, 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Each site will provide 161 total hours of one-stop voting. That brings that to a cumulative total of 483 hours. That's an additional 275 hours compared to the 2016 general election. The budget for this fiscal year that our department submitted accounted for 208 hours of one-stop voting. There will be a budget amendment presented later tonight. That's to fund our operations for the additional 275 hours. Here we have a calendar that's showing the schedule, so all three sites are running uniform hours. This is posted on our website. One-stop voting begins October the 17th. Like I said, there's thirteen weekdays, open 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and then one Saturday open 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Next slide. Another item of note, this past month, our board unanimously passed a resolution to permanently transfer the Bethlehem One Election Day precinct from Bethlehem Elementary School to Shallow Lutheran Church. That change is effective immediately, therefore voters in Bethlehem One precinct will cast their ballots at Shallow Lutheran Church on election day. All registered voters in that precinct have received a verification card in the mail alerting them to that change. We also plan to have signage onsite at Bethlehem Elementary School to divert folks to Shallow Lutheran Church. Next slide. Here you just have a precinct map of Bethlehem One, and then the blue dot you can see is Shallow Lutheran Church. That polling site moved probably a mile and a half south of where it was previously located at Bethlehem School. That's all I have, gentlemen. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may ask.
I think we view the answer, but maybe for people who are wondering and listening, this was done by the state. It was not really our decision to.
In reference to the one-stop?
Extending the hours.
Correct. And just some context on that, no county board in North Carolina was consulted regarding the change, the statutory changes. The State Board of Elections actually called an emergency meeting after these bills became public, and they cordially asked the General Assembly for advance notice for any dramatic changes to elections laws. So like I said, we were totally blindsided by this, new statutory requirements.
Where was somebody in Raleigh? Wanted to make sure there was plenty of time for some people to add anything, but. Appreciate your work on this, Patrick. Anyone have a question?
This'll be interesting to compare, once the votes read for this, if these additional hours are led, two more people voting. Of course, it may be hard as population movement, rest of voting movement as a percentage. May be interesting to compare it to another midterm to see, did these hours really enhance participation?
Certainly. And we do have that data set. We're able to capture hourly volume during one-stop.
I'd do it later, like almost more after the election, do a comparison. Because I just kind of like, because basically you've increased, or she, no, you, the states increased the hours substantially and the cost substantially, did it move the needle? If it moved the needle significantly, great. If it doesn't, then you can kind of question.
Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate that. Moving on to our next item, number five, presentation of emergency operations, emergency management, updates, I recognize Russ Green, our emergency services director.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to talk about these two things tonight. Prior to that, you mentioned the pending storm, and I can tell you, my phone has run off the hook all day. State Emergency Management works for the Weather Service and actually send us updates twice a day. And I just received the other one when I sat down in that chair just a few minutes ago, and I'll make this brief and kind of quick. But it looks like the storm's going to come into North Carolina, just south of Wilmington area, and turn north. This is showing me that we will see tropical force winds early morning Thursday, so we'll have to pay attention to those winds on Thursday. We have been communicating with our staff and our community and school system that Thursday night into Friday, we'll need to look at our scheduled ballgames, our things at Rocky Face Park, anything that would put our folks out in harm's way. And it also shows that by 2:00 p.m. on Saturday, the storm is leaving North Carolina into Virginia as a, as a low pressure. So hopefully, as soon as it hits landfall, it starts degregging quickly and moves to the north. So we are subject to see about seven inches of rain by latest forecast between now and next Monday, so we just have to ride it out and see. Talked with manager French today. We're actually meeting with our county department heads on Wednesday morning to talk about those various responsibilities if the storm does hit here. We all kind of remember Hugo. I think everybody in the room is old enough to remember Hugo, so it had a pretty significant impact in this area. So let's hope, as Melvin said, the good Lord turns it and it goes north. I vote for it staying out the ocean myself. I'm good with that. But wanted to give you that quick update.
Thank you.
First item tonight is, and just for your knowledge, we have been working to rewrite our emergency operations plan in our office. Our emergency operations plan was written originally in 1990, and it was updated in 2004, and at that time, it's 300-plus pages. We've taken that 300-plus pages, and we've made it 123 pages. That complies with the national framework, all right? People ask, what is an emergency operations plan? And we refer to it as an EOP. The EOP is a signed agreement among the jurisdictions and partner agencies in Alexander County. Provides a mechanism for coordinating the delivery of assistance and resources to residents, visitors, and businesses of Alexander County during a major disaster or emergency. There's a whole list of reasons to implement, implement the EOP, but it boils down to any occasion or instance for which the chairman of the county board of commissioners determines the assistance is needed to supplement county efforts and capabilities. So it falls back to the chairman to say, we're going to implement a plan. Who uses it? All our county, all our county departments and partner agencies, including our nonprofits like the Red Cross. This EOP is modeled after the national framework. It presents policies and concept of operations. This is not standard operating guidelines or standard operating procedures for EMS or the sheriff's office. It's up to each individual agency to come up with their own standard operating procedures. Now, we like to keep a copy of those on file in our office when they do develop them or update them, but that's not what this is. This is simply a concept of operations. It's based off the ESF, emergency support functions, and there are fifteen, defined by the federal government, there are fifteen emergency support functions, transportation, communications, public works, firefighters, emergency management, mass care. That's always a question when we start talking about sheltering, and I can tell you, I've had calls today that said, are you opening shelters? And my standard answer, and I want to say this, and I hope Chad gets this on the radio or somewhere, but my standard answer is, we open shelters when they're needed. We don't just open shelters in advance of a storm because somebody predicts it. We ask our citizens to go to their local volunteer fire department in their community, and when there's a group of citizens gathered at that fire department, they'll call us and make us aware that there's a group there, and then we'll determine where we need to open a shelter. And we've got designated shelters all over the county, but we determine if we open a shelter in Bethlehem, I am, I get the few people that are in Bethlehem, but then I may have 25 people in Bachtai. So it may make more sense to open a shelter in Taylorsville. So try to get that message out as often as can to our citizens. We're, we're listening. When our emergency service folks call us and say, I've got 20 people sitting here at the fire department, and they, they don't feel good going home, we're going to open a shelter for them. Okay? So that's part of, one of the functions in this plan. So what we've done, and what Chad's got up here for you, he has posted our emergency operations plan over on the far left. That's the draft version that we have here, because you gentlemen have not adopted it. And what we want to do is, we want our citizens to read it, we want our county department heads to read through it again. And anybody's got any questions, suggestions, we want to hear those, because we really want to bring it back to you in October for your adoption and approval. All of our department heads that have a role have seen their role as it's rewritten. They've all signed off on it. They've agreed to it. Every, every function's got the primary agency, whether it be law enforcement or DSS for sheltering, whatever it is. Then it's got supporting agencies that simply list all the other departments that will support those folks. So this is up as a draft on our website. You go to the county departments, you go to emergency services, under emergency management, and you'll see that. So that's the emergency operations plan. That was piece one. And please, get all the information. Any questions or comments, please give them back to us. But we want a good document that lasts for a good 10 or 15 years. Plans are great because it brings everybody together. We talk about their responsibilities, and everybody knows their role. And then we try, we try not to jerk them off the shelf, because if we hurt them off the shelf, it means we don't know what we're doing, but they're there for reference purposes. Okay? So that's our emergency operations plan. Part two is emergency management ordinance. Emergency management ordinance has not been updated since about 2009 or 2000, so we've updated to reflect the new statutes. It's, it's literally this much. It's about 20 pages or so. It's, it'll be a chapter in our, in our local ordinances for the county. The purpose of this chapter is to set forth the authority and responsibilities of the Board of Commissioners, County Manager, Emergency Manager Director, and Emergency Manager Agency in the prevention of, preparation for, response to, and recovery from natural or man-made disasters, and this is new part, or hostile military or paramilitary action. And to reduce vulnerability, prepare for prompt efficient rescue, provide for rapid order rehabilitation, provide cooperation and coordination of activity. Now, that's the, I gave you the Cliff Notes version, gentlemen, but it's there for you to be able to review also. Same thing, if there's comments or questions, please let us know. And I'm not asking just the board of commissioners to read through them, because you, you need to read through them because you're adopting it, but I want the general population to be able to go to them, look at them, and say, man, I think we're missing something. I want to make sure we've got a good plan and a good ordinance. So bring them to you tonight, let you know where they're at on our website so people can find them. We'll have a hard copy at our office for anyone that don't have access to the computer, and we'll make a hard copy and leave it upstairs here in the county administration. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What's your take? By condensed, it's less page, it's more usable docket, but sometimes less than one.
Absolutely. The old, the old plan was about 350 pages or something, and it had attachments in it, which was the entire ADA code. This is a concept of operations, not the down and dirty, bitty grit stuff. This, this is how we're going to do business, and everybody writes their own procedures as to how we're going to do business. This is just our concept. So yeah, it makes it a lot more user-friendly, and it's, and it's closer now to matching up with the national framework that we have to deal with all the time, federal government. And having this plan in this format makes it a little bit easier for us to comply sometime for grants, or to get reimbursement during a disaster. If we were to have a disaster this coming weekend, we get a federal declaration by the president, then we'd be subject for some reimbursement from FEMA. One of the requirements to do that is to have a plan. Well, we've got the old plan. It's posted there, and you can see the difference. When you look at the old one versus the new one, you'd be able to see the difference. This is streamlined, a lot easier, a lot user-friendly, let's put that way. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Not a question, but the same thing earlier, because I thought maybe you might piggyback what you were saying, what the good news that our, your fire departments had this week.
I'll be happy to. I was able to accompany, or Congresswoman Virginia Fox today. She made an appearance at 11 o'clock today at Stony Point Fire Department and was able to present them with a check for $178,048, assistance to firefighters grant that they received. And we heard about that a couple weeks ago, but she was here today in town, presented them with a check. And from Stony Point, we, we made our way over to Bethlehem, be at Crossroads Grill, but we made our way to Bethlehem, and she was able to present to Chief Ashley Starnes, who's here with us tonight, a check for just a little over $100,534. Number, present them with a check as well from the assistance firefighters grant. So in the last, in the last two weeks, through the assistance firefighters, we've discounted received over $278,000, which is great. I know the chief's plan is to buy some new hydraulic equipment for all his trucks, and Stony Point's plan was to replace all their aging air packs with new 4.5, lighter weight, easier on their firefighters. It was an opportunity to do that today. Certainly appreciate Congresswoman Fox coming to town and presenting those checks. But that grant program's out there. We have had some discussions about maybe utilizing it next year for a county-wide grant, and that's something we've got to sit down and put our heads together with the board presidents and the chiefs. Thank you for reminding me that, Mr. Phil.
Thanks, fire departments, for their work, and for the two that got the money. That's, that's a good thing, because in the county, they can use it for reimbursement help out there.
Absolutely.
Appreciate your work on this plan, and we'll be looking at it. Let's build a good place.
You gentlemen are all welcome to join us in the department head meeting Wednesday morning, and we'll talk about everybody's responsibility to storm hits, and what we'll be and what we'll be doing. But we don't have to do it, but we always, we always have to brag on our volunteers because they do such a great job for us, countywide, everything they do. All right, so thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to item number six, engineering services proposals for Stony Point Elementary CD BG one wastewater project, recognized, can you read it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alexander County received proposals in response to the RFQ for the $894,750 CD BG one grant. The services to be provided for the project include development and successful approval for the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, Division of Water Infrastructure required. It is required, they require engineering report, design approval, bidding, construction, inspection, contract administration, through the final certification of this project. inspection, contractor administration, through the final certification of this project. We had five engineering firms submit proposals. Committee was formed and reviewed those proposals, myself and the county engineer, Carol Robertson. Thanks to the RFQ, the committee graded all the firms. The firm that we're recommending requests consultants, they had the highest average, they were the most reputable, so we were there to say they're going to sure take the project. It is a committee's recommendation to board commissioners to allow the county manager to negotiate a contract with consultants for engineering services for the Stony Point Elementary CDVG1 wastewater project.
Moving to... Anything quick? Sounds good, and get moving forward with that. I think you have any tangulation to approve the recommendation from the committee for the county manager to move forward with negotiating a contract with West Consultants, who are the surety for the Stony Point School project. Have a motion, have a say?
Second.
Do you have a motion to say? Any suggestions? Get them up. Any tangulation, all in favor, right to President, I have a question, thank you, gentlemen. Item number seven, recognized by our county commissioner, Rick French, again, for the memorandum agreement for funding one school resource officer position for 2018, 2019, and 2019 to 2020 school years between the Alexander County and the Alexander County School Association.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few weeks back, Dr. Heffner informed us, the schools had received, the school safety grant from the North Carolina Department of Construction. Total amount of grant funds was $28,700. The school was going to pay $14,350 to match that for a total of $43,050. For the help of our attorney, we have drafted an agreement that reflects that. It outlines the school resource officer position. It's going to be split between two elementary schools at night in Stony Point. It'll take a budget amendment, which you'll see later tonight. It's for a two-year period. The first year would be $43,769.14, and the second year would be $41,826.53. The reason it's more the first year is because it includes uniforms, equipment, for a total of $85,595.67. This is not included vehicle, as the sheriff's department has found a vehicle that could be used for those two schools. But again, it's a two-year agreement for school resource officer, which is badly needed, and we appreciate all the work of the schools to pay a grant, and this connects everything where the county, the schools, and the sheriff agree on how it's to set up, and it gives us a, outlines everything and agree with them. Would anybody try to answer any questions?
So right now, it's two-year?
Yes.
And I may be getting ahead of myself, but what's the plan on three years plus?
There's no plan.
Okay.
It's only for, it's for two years, it's, school pays for 10 months, that will afford the other two months for this, but it's only for the two grant years. If we can get more grants, we'll pursue those.
So we'll re-look at that time?
Yes, sir.
Should be good now. Okay. Everyone's heard, and agreed, and a motion? Have a say, approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Second.
All the way to the driving floor? Motion approved, thank you, gentlemen. Then moving on to item number eight, having a little clip, a little different here, Constitution Day and Citizenship Day Proclamation, Constitution Week 2018, I recognize Rick French, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, you have the results for calculations for Constitution Week, which is something the board has adopted every year, and I'll be glad to answer any questions with the calculations in your package.
Any suggestions? Any suggestions? Being that, I'm going to vote for approval, raise your hand. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. And moving on to our item number nine, the board appointments and reappointments, Council on Aging and Bethlehem Community Plan Committee, recognize Rick French, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council on Aging, reappoint Chris Allen for three years, the Bethlehem Community Plan Committee appoint Bud Kaywood, Brian Mayberry, Ashley Starnes, Randy Boggs, Steve Brown, Jim Price, Betty Long, Andy Japp, and Susan Osborne.
I'd like to also, sir, we could add John Daughtry.
That would be nine, ten, and their first meeting will be when?
It's tentatively scheduled for September 25th. I informed the council of governments when that would be, and they're supposed to get back to me to make sure they don't have any conflicts, but I'll follow up with them tomorrow, now that the committee's been formally appointed. And they will meet at the Bethlehem Volunteer Fire Department. The fire department had offered the community room for a meeting space.
I just think that John, he's Bethlehem, is that?
Yes. Born and raised, well, that's not true, he was born in New York. Somewhere like that, somewhere where we're trying to send that school.
I'd like to, I'd like to request for a motion, and a say.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the board appointments, number one, Council on Aging, and number two, Bethlehem Community Plan Committee, with the addition of...
John Daughtry.
John Daughtry.
Do you want to have a motion?
Second.
Do you have a say? Any other discussion or questions? And being that, I do have a vote of approval, raise your hand. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
And just before we get on, I'll just add that it is not very easy sometimes to get people to serve on these committees, so we appreciate those people that are doing so.
Yeah, that's a good thing. Moving on to item number 10, budget ordinance amendments, number seven through number 12, and I recognize Rick French, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget amendment number seven is to increase the board of actions budget for changes in one-stop fully building schedules due to the recent statutory changes. Number eight is to increase EMS budget for Medicaid program reimbursement payment required by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. This payment is a result of the NCDHHS desk review of the 2012 EMS Medicaid cost report, which adjusted the report as originally filed. Number nine is to adjust senior center budget for estimated grant revenue, key incorrect line item during the budget process. Number 10 is to increase the public buildings maintenance budget to hire another maintenance worker. Number 11 is to budget for 2019 payment to Alexander County Schools to help cover the cost of the 21st century program at Taylorville Elementary School for the 2018-19 budget year. And budget amendment number 12 is to increase the service office budget to hire a school resource officer to serve two elementary schools for the 2018-2019 school year, 10 months. The funding from the Alexander County School System for the agreement between the board of action and the Alexander County Board of Commissioners. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. French, on budget ordinance number 11, amendment number 11, that is half of that total.
That is, that is, the town is framing the other half.
And is this the second year in a row we've done that?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So I know there was a grant application, but on a competitive grant.
That's right, yes, sir.
And number seven, just reiterate, the state pushing down those extended hours has costed the town, right, $8,763.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Sorry.
Would they help us on that?
Number 12. Help me understand that, and the money listed in the MIA.
It's probably, it might be just a few dollars different, but it's, I mean, I think it's fine. Our two financial officers work together, make sure it's...
On number 12, this question that I mean, is there any idea which school?
On the amendment number... Sorry, I lost which one I was on. Okay, number 10. The public buildings and maintenance, I know we've been talking about that for several years, that they were just...
We actually have some in, some sickness, and we have people that are out, but that's still somebody that's going to come back to work, so we've been shorthanded, so we're trying to, to replace, in the long run, and they all balance out, but this is just, we're recommending that we do it.
Okay. So you can't take those other people off the budget, and you just have to hire somebody?
No, some money's been, it's sicking, they'll come back to work.
Right.
Have any motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the budget amendment number seven, the one that brought up yesterday.
Have a motion, have a say.
Second.
Thank you, motion, have a say. Any other discussion or question? If none, I didn't think, both approval, raise your hand. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item number 11, county sales tax revenue for 2017-2018 budget year, I recognize Mr. Rick French, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the final sales tax report for the 17-18 budget year. We were right on target, pretty much, with the numbers. The county received $4,536,736, which is 99.45% of what we budgeted, which was $4,556. For the new sales tax, we were just a little bit over $1,447,663, which was 101.16% of the sales tax that we budgeted, which was $1,401. Delaware County sales tax increased four and a half percent, new sales tax increased seven, eight percent.
Let's not pretend we're really right where we've been yet.
Is that the 99.45%, so we were off 0.55% on, we were low on what we figured was going to come in for?
That's right.
What was that, what was that been?
It'd be about 20, less than 26, 25,000.
Probably 1% would be 45,000, 560.
That's hot.
So, and... And the new sales tax, I think Commissioner Campbell, didn't we figure on most of that had already been promised out? We've spent that in other places now?
I would say so. Thank you, Rick. Okay, moving on to item number 12, county manager's report, I recognize Rick French, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things to mention, we had a long closed session. I attended the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Meeting in Hickory, and there were a lot of informal sessions. We talked about the MOUs, the ESSs, and it's a scary time, and maybe that's not the right word, but I know that Cherokee County is basically now there, the ESS is operated on state. And we've heard a lot about that, and what's going on in that arena. There are 27 measurements that will be required to follow. Not following those will be based on a corrective action plan and other things. Eventually, they can call the money, eventually they can let us hire employees. And we're hearing where the ESSs in North Carolina, or wherever the county tells us they're having trouble retaining their employees, and that's the sort of reason why smaller counties like us really got trouble in that area. So we're working on that. We talked about Medicaid transformation, which is a big thing. We have somebody coming to apply to help, we've been coming a couple of months, and that's bad. There was legislative updates in a short session. One of the things that we're all aware, which is totally new, is the General Assembly has granted cities and towns a new ability to use property tax revenue to fund public schools, and they can earmark any funds for specific purposes for specific schools.
So Town Taylorsville could spend property tax money on Taylorsville Elementary School if they so chose.
That's right.
Get out our station, we don't, we don't...
We don't, we don't have their policy.
Say, if they chose to, they could do general funding, and/or if, if I understand correctly, they can earmark it, like for Taylorsville, or for Alvin Center, look up there in the township. Or, you know, relate the earmark for whatever, but I mean, I think it'd be hard to sell. It's looking for the state town that'll be able, you know, spend money to stop a storm.
Right. Could they earmark, they can't do that. Can they earmark that money, like, to, I don't know, do a new roof, or could they earmark it to add to new teachers? Do you know any of that?
I don't know, but, you know, they did match our $40,000 for that one program, so they can do different things.
The first semblance of this meeting in place, this might actually pull the lever.
Any information, do you have a question, gentlemen? And now, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda, and every time I see you with that, I'm going to take a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated in our book.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any questions? Being that, you have a vote of approval, raise your hand, for the consent agenda. This time, I'll request a motion and a second for adjournment into the closed session, statute NCDS 143-318.11, Act 5 and 6, for contractual and personnel purposes only, and we will reconvene only for the purpose of the jury. Motion?
Make a motion that we do just that.
Make a motion, have a say. All the papers are ready, raise your hand.